Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of 29 October. Tonight, we have a tax classification hearing. Every year, the Board of Selectmen must vote on whether to have a single tax rate or multiple tax rate. We'll work through that with the Board of Assessors who are also here with us. We also have on the agenda some financial matters, talking about guidance on operational budgets for fiscal year 14. It's hard to believe, excuse me, 15. It's hard to believe we're coming around to that. Discussion on any Board of Selectmen items for the capital budget and plan for fiscal years 15 through 20. Have some appointments to make, action on contract regarding center school. Recall, we got a grant to do a study with respect to the feasibility of various options for use of the former center school, as well as facility assessment and the committee we've had working that's come back with a recommendation as to how to proceed. We'll have some discussion about potential grant opportunities, reports on various projects, and we may have some performance discussions depending on certain staff members and whether they're here or not. Before we begin, is anyone here for open forum? Okay, at this time, I'd invite the Board of Assessors to join us and declare the tax classification hearing open.
Second.
The Assessor's recommendations, the allocation of the tax levy. The Board of Assessors recommends that a factor of one be adopted for FY '14. This will keep a single tax rate for all classes of property in Hatfield. Shift from open space to residential class. The Board of Assessors recommends that no open space discount be granted for FY '14. Residential exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends that no residential exemption be granted for FY '14. Small commercial exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends that no small commercial exemption be granted for FY '14.
No comment to add.
No comment.
Presented to the Board and for consideration.
Is there any discussion before we... Questions?
No, I don't have any. I agree with the one.
Is there a motion to adopt a single tax rate for fiscal year 15 with a factor of 1.0?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion that no open space discount be granted for fiscal year 15?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion that no residential exemption be granted for fiscal year 15?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, she said 14, you're saying 15. I thought 14.
14, excuse me.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Is there a motion, no commercial exemption be granted for the fiscal year 14?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to close this hearing?
Motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's closed. Thank you very much. You don't have any?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I would hesitate to guess, but...
Not yet, we don't know.
Has all the paperwork come back from the DOR yet?
Still waiting.
No?
Okay.
I don't know if we'll have, will we have to do estimated taxes?
No, we're fine. We're, we shouldn't hear back.
I wouldn't see a reason why.
We're pretty good.
It was cooperation of all the folks in the town hall, we were able to get all our forms in and we can certify and approve, we're just waiting to hear back.
That's, unless you're really late with the DOR and stuff like that, then you'd have to do estimated, but other than that, I think we've only done it once or maybe twice in the history.
Well, we were actually early. Patriots got the work done.
Yeah, we're in good shape.
All right, thank you very much. Sir, a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes of 8 October?
Motion approved, October 8th, minutes of...
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jericho Road, Bayside. Okay. We have Mr. Harlow here who is requesting some materials, I believe. I mean, I think we should have them speak first and see exactly what they're looking for.
Hi.
Afternoon.
I own some land out on Jericho Road, and I'm just a few lots. I'm not a developer, nothing like that. Just got a few lots, my brother owns a lot, Mr. Quadro there would like to buy a lot. I got another friend of mine that's interested in one, he lives here in town, and so I can see the next couple of years, there's five lots out there right now, having five houses out there. So far, I've brought in 18 ton of gravel of my own, just so I could get in and out of the road. And in the first year that my brother was in there, I did the plowing and the grading, but then it was time enough to grade it once in the spring and plow it in the winter, up to a sign that says maintained up to this point. This year, the grader, I guess, was busted, so I did the grading out there with my own machine and brought in some more gravel and helped out the farmers a little bit, because it got pretty soupy, pretty muddy. It's gone a long way since the end of the streets of my brother's house, but after that, it still gets pretty soupy. And I know in a couple of years, I mean, I'm not going to be living out there, but I know in a couple of years, there's going to be five people living out there, and I'm sure they're just going to want to know what you can or will do for them, you know what I mean? As far as, can you, we're not asking to put in a road or do anything like that, but we were just wondering if you could bring in a little, I know they got a lot of millings. Millings compacts really hard, they did it up on Straits Road, I mean, that came out hard as a rock.
Can't grade that stuff, don't want you to put it down.
Once you put it down, yeah.
I have a financial interest in a property...
Right.
Adjacent to what Mr. Harlow's discussing, so I'd like to recuse myself from any of the discussion or votes, so.
Good.
Okay.
Take care of it here.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, like you said, we brought in, I've done quite a bit of money out of my own pocket and everything, just to make it nice for whoever's going to be living out there, and for me to be able to sell these lots, because nobody's going to want to buy anything on a mud bog, but it is a town road, and it does say maintained up to this point, and I guess there is a rock out there that the grader guy sprays in fluorescent that says this is the end of the maintaining part of it, or whatever. And, I don't know, I just, I thought I heard somewhere, and I'm not sure if it's chapter 90 or whatever it is, that says that if the town accepts money from residents out on a dirt road, then they have to maintain it, or something like that. I'm not sure about that. I should have looked into it a little bit more, I just kind of heard about it yesterday, to be honest with you. But I don't know if that's the case or anything like that, but I'm just, we're not asking to put a tarred or do anything like that, we're just seeing what kind of help we can get.
Little concern, little concern that I have is that road is, I believe, only 16 feet wide.
Sixteen and a half, yeah.
And sixteen and a half feet wide, and this is, before you even started building, that was my concern.
Right, yeah.
And to get an emergency vehicle down there and one back, you're going to have to go outside that 16 foot, and if somebody gets buried and somebody gets hurt, then that's my question, how are we going to solve that?
Right.
Was told to me that you were going to be putting an access road down your property at one point, that's what I had heard, but maybe it's not true.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do whatever, whatever would help out, but as far as, I've heard three or four different things.
Well, 16 feet is one rod, and I believe the roads in this town are roughly one rod.
I know that was.
All the, well, all the...
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
All the side roads, you know, for the most part.
About that wide, exactly.
And, I mean, we allow building up there, so.
Yeah.
You know, my question is, well, I just want, and I know we've had problems up on Mountain Road, and I talked to you about that, and I just don't want people thinking, and I don't have a problem with you putting in the five houses by any means. I mean, it's your property, you're in business to make a dollar too. I just don't want people to come back at us in two or three years and say, pave it. And then we end up paving on somebody's private property, which has been done in this town, which I wasn't in favor of, but it got done. You know, I mean, I guess that's my biggest concern. I mean, I think we could be able to maintain, I mean, I can ask Phil that one.
Before I even started, you know, I came in to actually talk to Mr. Batika here, Phil wasn't even here yet, and he's saying, oh, I want the eight inch water line, or six inch water line, eight inch sewer line, I'm like, for a couple of lots? So then I talked to another gentleman, I'm not sure, but they were going to consider it like a common driveway. I mean, that's a common driveway out there until a lot more happens, and then we decide that, okay, we're going to take it over as a town road, or when are we going to call it a common driveway to a town road? And, you know, and I can understand maybe the town holding off a little bit just to see if any kind of development did happen out there, because of course, it'd be nice if the developer paid to put the road in the water and sewer and everything like that, and the town didn't have to pay for anything, but we're not in that position at all, we're just a couple of people up there with a couple of lots that like to put in some houses, and we got, we make all the setbacks, all the frontages, all the, you know, all the, we're all good to go, except for, we just liked a little bit of help with the land, that's all, the road, that's all. I know you're concerned with the way...
I still have a big concern over the safety of vehicles getting down there, and then there, then at the end, what you're doing is you're forcing us to put the road in, and there's no place to turn around at the end of the last house.
Yeah.
Okay? Even if we maintain that 16 foot road, then we have nothing, there's no cuttle sack, there's nothing there.
Yeah, no culsack, because there's plenty of room to turn around.
So, you know, right now, they turn around in what used to be Chester's, Peles's driveway.
Right.
Okay, that's why that sign says this is no further, you know, this is the end of the plowing, and then they're back in the driveway and out they go.
Right.
But that was a understanding.
Long time ago. Yeah, there was water and power out there too, at that point, and there, that was, so anyways, whatever.
So, you know, my concern is the emergency vehicles and stuff like that, because if you get, you get a fire truck stuck and it can't get to the last house...
Yeah, well...
Who's responsible? We're responsible.
Yeah.
Okay? That's my question, okay? We're going to allow that, and Phil, I think you need to...
It does get money out there, that's for sure, so, I mean, if you do get a vehicle out there, they are going to get stuck, especially in the springtime, because when the snow melts, it's just, it's just dirt. It's not, no gravel base, no nothing.
If something happens, they need an ambulance on that last house, you know, that's why I thought you were putting the road in on your property, and you'd be plowing it and a whole bit.
I did quite a bit out there.
Yeah, I didn't know what was going on.
There's a good turnaround in everybody's driveway.
You started with, yeah, you started with one house...
Yeah.
And then you talked about maybe going with more...
Yeah, there's five lots out there.
Couple years ago.
But he's got one, and I have four, and hopefully, we'll be down to two by the end of this year.
So, the concern is there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I'm not sure what legal right we have, you know, allowing the permits or not, without the road being there. That's something I'd want to see the attorney coming back with us and letting us know.
I think, I think we are, I think we had...
You're laughing, but it's a big concern.
I think we've had...
If there's an ambulance that can't get to your house, I'm concerned over that.
Can I have a moment?
Sure.
You should come up here, though.
I hear concerns about the road. It is a town road. And the only reason that you allowed me to go out there was because there was a previous individual out there with power, actually had a three-quarter inch water line out there to him, and I've done a...
That's up to Chester Peles's, right?
You're worried about that road, but it is a Hatfield road. I know that you can say that it's a county road.
County road.
It's all been turned over to the towns. We've been through that, and...
I need to see the documents.
And if you want to go, if you want him to put a road on the property, then that means you eliminate the lots out there. Do you want it to be farmland, or is it, or are they residential?
I didn't say that I wanted them to put a road out there. I thought, when he first talked about putting your house in, and the existing lots, yeah.
Turnaround at the end, just to turn around at the end.
You talked about putting a development in or running a road down through there.
I'm only a little guy.
Okay, so, or what we thought.
Well, that's what we've been trying to tell everybody.
Yeah, we're not developing.
He's not a developer.
Yeah.
I bought the lot back out there in, what, 2008 at the end, and then I get here and find out that it's a residential lot, I've been paying taxes on it for a residential lot, and I can't even get out to the place. And I'm saying, wait a minute here, you know, when I first went out there, it was dry. Then it gets muddy, and the thing goes, you sink down to the bottom of it, and I'm thinking, what is going on here? Is it a residential lot? If you want to keep it farming, then go ahead and change the code and stuff like that, but...
Issue of whether it's farming or land I bought in the woods.
Especially that side of the road.
It doesn't matter if it's farming or residential.
No, I bought in the woods, I even, you know what, I mean, I don't even need to get into it, but that land, I bought a dump. I bought a dump out there, off the town, or off of Mrs. Peles there. I've taken out 70 tons of metal, 70 tons of metal came out of that property, and I've taken out two dump truck loads of tires. I mean, I cleaned up Hatfield's dump. That place was, I mean, I know back in the day that was permitted, but nowadays, it's not, so, I mean, I think it's good that Hatfield got me in there, or I'm in there, because I did a huge favor there.
Did a good job, there's no question of that.
You know, and then there was, I even take $700 to the landfill and dump trucks of loads of metal and, I mean, everything, I hauled in 17 and a half tons of gravel. I've done a lot out there, and the town really hasn't done anything. It is a town road, and they are collecting taxes, and he's paying taxes, I'm paying taxes, and the way I look at it is, you're going to have five lots out there, and they're paying over five grand in taxes, so if you've got five people paying almost $6,000 in taxes a year, that's 30 grand a year. Now, I know it's spread out through for everybody else, but, I mean, you think you get a little bit from town after they start paying.
And then deduct $10,000 per kid, and what do you have left?
Yeah, he's out there with no kids, and he's out there with no kids, so there's two houses, so so far, you're in good shape, you know? The other three lots, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But so far, you're in good shape, as far as the people, they're all retired military.
Yeah, I just, I would like to hear what Phil...
I just want to know where the lots are situated on that road, are they past the no maintenance sign?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They're about four lots past that no maintenance.
That's my, that's my concern.
But then there's a rock out there that your grader guy even...
I mean, I'm sure that the town went through something to declare that where there's no longer any maintenance on that road for some reason.
That's where Peles's house was, he was the only house out there, so they didn't need to go past his house.
So, for some reason, and my concern is, is that I don't want to set the precedent of us maintaining a non-maintenance road that was posted at the town, because there's others in town, there's others in town, and soon as they see...
They have all stage road that got...
They see us doing something for them, they're going to be in here, just like you're in here. I mean, I have nothing against your five lots or against you, but I just don't want to set that precedence here.
Yeah, the thing is that, you know, the reason they put that sign in, my belief is because that's where the house was, and they were saying, all right, we're going to plow up to this gentleman's residence, but we're not going to go any further. We're just asking that you plow up to the last resident that's on the road.
Okay, the lot, right, and because we plowed up to Chester Peles's at the time, and then after that, there was no gravel put in there, it's all just regular...
There was no gravel from day one, yeah.
Okay?
I brought it all.
Up to your house, I think there was gravel up to there, because we had to maintain that, I know that.
Actually, something happened in the, right at the start, I don't know what it was.
They put a drain in, the town put a drain in, and then when they backfilled it, they didn't really do the greatest job of backfilling with gravel, they backfilled with the regular dirt, so it made it even worse, actually. I think it got hit this spring, too.
So, I think, Phil...
There's no gravel on that road, other than what I brought in, I can guarantee that.
And, I mean, it's just like, for instance, any subdivision that's not accepted until somebody accepts it at town meeting, we didn't maintain any of those streets.
Beyond that point, that's no different than up on Mountain Road, or...
No difference.
Or Lindsay Road, up to that certain Port Rocks Road.
So, I mean, if someone wants to petition to accept a portion of that road at town meeting, and let the townspeople decide that, but as of now, I don't want to set that precedent where we're going to maintain a non-accepted street, or a street that has no maintenance on it, posted for obvious reasons.
In order to do it right, you'd be digging out 16 feet, four feet deep, or three feet deep, putting in a hole within the base.
I just can't, I don't want to set that precedent, because like I said...
What about those streets, did they dig that out?
I don't, I wasn't here.
No, no, those are just millings.
Yeah.
It's terrible.
But that's all sand, I mean, it's, I mean, that's basically beach sand up there.
Yeah, what are you planning on doing with all the millings that you got up there at the T C W, that's a hell of a pile you got there.
Well, the pile's dwindled now, because we've cleaned up the yard, and we've used them in the yard, and there's only certain uses for that, because some of it, they claim is hazardous material, so there's only certain areas you can put it, put it on the edges of the road.
What I brought in is the regular gravel, recycled gravel, compact rock, but, you know, it's not cheap, get it from Millers.
Well, I think you should, you should do some investigation on that and come back with an answer, Phil.
You're still planning on, I mean, they were grading it once in the spring and plowing it in the winter up to that point, and we're just hoping that they...
Up to your house, yeah.
Up to the first lot, yeah, but now, if there's another house going on, are they going to move the sign?
That's what he's talking about.
I would say no.
So, it's not a town road, it's not, so you should take the Jericho Road sign off and take the sign off.
Well, it is a town road, but we maintain up to that sign period, done.
Yeah, because that's where the last resident was, but if you ever pass that, you're not going to...
You know, I remember, I mean, this is probably in your era of your first selectmanship, but it was right in that era, back in the 80s, I think, that the board decided, because of the houses being built way out, not so much yours, but other places, people were wanting to build way out in the, off the, in the boonies, whatever you want to call, and it was going to cause the town a fortune to do it. So, they came up with the idea of, okay, here's, here it is, and it's unimproved beyond that, it's still considered a town road, and, I mean, I guess I'd have to sit down and maybe call a couple of the other board members that I think I remember that were on there to see exactly what it would be, but, I mean, if it's a town road, I think we allowed one other place where you want to maintain that road, you as the residents that are going to build there. The town wouldn't have a problem with it, but I'm saying, you put the road bed in, you do everything, you know, that way, if we ever do decide to take it over, we would take it over.
That happened on Old Stage Road, yeah.
Was it, I can't remember where it was, but anyways, we ended up taking the road over after, I don't know...
After you got enough houses, enough taxpayers up there, then you probably could have...
But they were moving along, they were putting in...
They brought the road up to their property line, and the next guy would bring it up to his property line...
Right.
Because they wanted to build up there, and that's how, that's how it progressed.
Yep, I grew up there.
But, you know, as far as the millings, I mean, I don't know, if you, if you want to do the work, and you put a good road bed in there, I mean, we can, I don't think it would be a problem, seeing it's going on town property.
No matter what you put in there, Jan, you're going to have to dig that out and put a base in there.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to have to put a bony base in there, and it should be 24 feet wide, okay, because by the time you have your snow storage...
Well, again, we can check into that, I think, I think we had that answered for us, if I remember right.
Yeah.
So, I'm...
We had that answered, we had that answered with us when you wanted to put the electric utility in there.
Yeah, so one hot road, basically, so one hot, one what?
One rod.
One rod.
Yep.
So, if you have 16 foot right away, 16 and a half foot right away in there, and that's all you have for the town.
Now, your electric, that's all underground up through there, that's on your property?
All on my property.
The homeowner...
Well, except for between the two farmlands.
From the pole to your property?
Yeah, it's underground down the road.
And that is Schedule 80.
Yeah, that's Schedule 80, and then it goes into our land.
Yeah, but, I mean, after, once it's underground, your transformers and everything are on your property.
Ten feet our side.
Yeah, and then right away to the power company and the other communication company.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just worried about, you know, that they didn't go down the road, and then somebody starts digging it up, and...
You just, you just can't...
The cable's going to be in the way, and then we're going to have to deal with that.
You just can't add stuff to the top of it, because it's still going to be spongy underneath, and you're going to get buried, and that's my concern. You put a big fire truck in there in the wintertime or in the springtime, forget it.
We can just keep bringing gravel of our own, just to make it so we can get in and out, but it's not right, because it's not probably graded right, or whatever, I mean, someday, you're going to be coming in and taking all the money that we put in.
That's why the roads are all discontinued because of that reason, they're just farm road servicing the fields.
Right.
And that's what they were there for, okay? And they were there for stagecoach years ago, years and years ago, so, there was no real base that was put in, okay, so, but that's something that, Phil, you're going to have to look into, and see how we're going to proceed with that, see what your recommendation is. I move that we take it under advisement, and let Phil do some investigation, talk with the attorney, and if we're going to proceed with the road, then we're going to get a cost, and have to go to town meeting for that.
Well, that would have to go to town meeting.
Yep.
I'm asking, I mean, you might be asking for a road, but I don't ask her for a road, I'm just asking for a little bit of help, you know, plowing, and maybe grade it once in a while with a grader, you know, but...
Just remember, in the spring, you get buried in there.
Yeah.
Get buried big time.
Pretty good now, we're good up to his house, because I brought in so much gravel, but...
The minute you get the spring, the freeze and thaw, that's when you're going to have the major problems.
March 21st.
Yeah, that's when it is.
Every year.
And I'm, like I said, I'm very concerned about emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
So are we.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
All right, so we will take it under advisement, and we'll get back to you at our next...
Motion denied.
I second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll take it under advisement, what we'll do is, go, I may take a ride up there with Phil, just because I know the area, but I don't know where your house is, and we can check again with the attorney, but I think that portion of that was pretty much all set.
I just witnessed a park test up there the other day, so, it's the first time I've been in there for a long time.
Yeah, looks good.
I mean, you did an excellent job cleaning everything up and cleaning it out.
And again, like I say, you know, I mean, there's options, I mean, again, you could petition the town, go to town meeting, see if we could expand the unimprovement road Expand the unimprovement road sign down the road by six hundred feet, I guess it would probably be. Eight hundred feet. I mean, I don't even know where that'll end up, what that road looks like or anything like that.
I'm curious, Phil, there's a stone down there that they put fluorescent.
It's townstone.
It's a townstone. It's like they're saying, okay, this is the end of the road. But even though the road continues further out to farmland, I don't know why the guy that works. Kept spray painting it fluorescent.
It's not maintained after that point, the signs should say.
That's the sign, but further on down the road, there's this rock. And it's, they spray paints it fluorescent, and he says, this is the, as far as I know, on the left, the end of the road.
Well, sometimes the farmers put those there to keep. To keep them out of the road because when they plow and stuff, they'll, they'll go right into the road.
It's not a farmer.
Well, what's his name there?
What's it?
It's not a farmer.
No, they put their rock in there?
No, it's. Town employee that paints it.
That paints it every year when he does go in there to grade.
Phil, I know nothing about that.
No, that's probably, so he doesn't hit it for, is it a big stone I heard?
It's a rock that is off on the side of the road and it's.
And that's as far as he runs the grader to?
As far as he runs the grader to, and he gets out there and he sprays, pays it fluorescent, so maybe you can ask him what, what that fluorescent stone's all about on Jerko Road. And he can find out a little bit more about that. I don't know what that is.
Because it, it's probably going to have to be surveyed. I don't know if your land was all.
Big survey, yeah, I mean, that land's been surveyed.
I mean, then, at that point, we can go, at that point, we can go sixteen feet off of your survey, so we know exactly where the town lines are.
And we got, we found all the road pins, all the town road pins and made sure they were on this side of.
What are we talking about, a thousand feet of road?
To continue out to the end of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I can, I'm going to show you. I got the map right here.
There's five lots and two hundred feet a lot, roughly, thousand feet.
This is where the sign is, right here. The sign's right here. So, this is the last lot right here.
Yeah, some lots.
One, two, three, four, five. This one here, I see it's got. This is the high back, this is the bank to the wetland, so you can only build in certain spots.
What's your depth of that lot? Are they in Dino?
The center of the river. All the way to the center of the river.
You don't know, I mean, roughly how many feet?
This one right here says.
Five hundred feet, five forty-seven?
Forty-seven from, and then this one, I don't even know what that, that's five hundred and forty-seven to there. Tie course, and then it says five hundred and eighty-seven along the center line of the Mill River.
The way that Mill River curves in and out.
Yeah, so all those lots go back to the center of the Mill River, actually.
So, you roughly have a thousand feet.
Is that what it is?
So, you'd, you'd be looking at a gravel road dug out and put in for a base.
A little bit.
And then you've got a problem at the end, the turnaround.
They wouldn't be able to turn around in anybody's driveway?
No.
They can't use the driveway as a turnaround?
Not supposed to, no.
Not supposed to, yeah. I mean, if, you know, a fire truck's out here and an ambulance is kind of, it just really congested.
So, anyways, so right now you're kind of looking at it as a common driveway almost still, unless changing my.
Um, it can't be a common driveway. It's, it's a town, town road or a county road. I don't believe the town took it over, not in my years anyway.
Yeah, what I did is I ended up going down when this first started is I went down to the.
County Commissioner's office?
I mean, we can talk about this, let me get a hold, let me get a hold, we'll get a hold of Bill Young, because I know we dealt with the front part of that. The entrance off of.
Yes, we do.
And.
And then, Phil, we'll get back to you.
Then Phil can.
Thanks for plowing us out that time.
You're welcome.
That was twenty-seven inches of sand on my driveway.
We don't want to see anybody.
My four-wheeler just was not hacking it.
We won't let, we won't leave anybody stranded in town.
Appreciate it.
Not for an emergency.
Okay, thank you. We'll get back to you.
We have two ambulance appointments. There are motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Daniel Howard and Mr. Brian Mayer to the Hatfield Ambulance Department.
I move we appoint both of them to the ambulance committee.
There are seconds?
All second.
All in favor? Capital. Oh, this is the operating budget.
Draft operating. I read this through, Jeff, and we're again. What's happening here is you're crying that, we're crying that there's no money, but yet we find money for all kinds of projects. And their budgets still sit the way they sit, and we're asking them to, to level fund.
No, right down here.
I, I know it says down here, but.
Here's, here's, I got a couple, I didn't, I didn't draft this one. Paul did.
Okay. I just want to give them an opportunity this year to tell us if they need more money in their budget, if they don't. Instead of crying wolf and saying, we don't have the money, it's like, we don't know if we have the money yet, but what, what is your real need and how much you're, you know.
I'm adding a third tick here, justify and explain any significant budget increases requested.
But I, you know, I mean, when somebody reads it, if they don't read the whole thing. Okay, the first thing they're going to say is, oh, they're asking us to level fund again.
Well. Quite, quite frankly, I mean, there's no.
Well, we don't go back after we find there's going to be extra money and say, well, redo your budget and come in with an actual.
I, I like Lydia's.
No, we can finally keep some money for ourselves for a while.
Read it first.
We can put it, you know, we can put it somewhere.
Yeah, I, I was just proposing a couple of edits. One, and the second paragraph as guidance and then three ticks. The first tick would be the first paragraph as reflected. Don't include COLA, we'll all decide that centrally.
Right, we decide that, right.
And then, second. Provide information on all sources and amounts of funds available to you from other than taxation, as well as justification for any requested new positions. Temporary or permanent. And then change that last to another tick to say, justify, explain any significant budget increases requested. Include here operating expenses associated with requested capital budget items. You know, we have capital items that have an operational tail that we need to capture. Those are the only edits I had, none of that.
So, maybe the letter should start off as, please read this whole letter to the end, okay? I'm, I'm serious because it's, you know, when they get to that point, it just turns them off and, and that's it, and they throw the letter on the side, but. They really should read the whole thing right to the end. It's, it's not our fault that they don't read it. If you put right up front that, please read it right to the end.
Well, I, I, I trust. I, I did have one other suggested change, and that is, Paul had drafted this from the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. This is from the Board of Selectmen. The Finance Committee's role under law is to provide independent judgment. And commentary on the proposed budget to town meeting. They don't decide what the budget is. So, this is, we're, we're responsible. So, this is from us, as it always has been.
All right, so maybe revise it and get it out there.
You okay with that, those changes? Capital plan. I wish Paul were here, but. We've, we've got capital budgeting kicking off under our town bylaw. The inputs are due the first of December to Capital Improvement Planning Committee. That committee's already. Held its organizational meeting, put out a call and schedule for, for input from various staff elements. But it's on our agenda for any items that we think we want in there. Or need to be in the capital budget, and this is from fifteen through twenty. Again, the bylaw calls for the budget year, the execution year, as well as the planning years following five, so it's a six-year plan. The only. Couple of things I had, and I was, I was hopeful that Paul would be here. One, I can't, I can't believe we don't have a significant IT buy. Somewhere over the next six years, that would total ten thousand dollars or more. But he didn't indicate anything. The other thing is, we have to have, as you know, based on the variance we got from the Department of Public Safety Architectural Access Board. The phase two for the town hall to comply with the Americans with Disability Act. You know, the variance was from complying with that immediately as we're doing this first phase. They gave us a time period to come back and finish up our compliance. So, that phase two needs to be here in, in, it's either Board of Selectmen or. Or DPW's budget, which I don't know how we're going to carry that, but someone, someone needs to carry that. Is, I don't know, are there any CPC requests that we should be making, Community Preservation?
We could do that, but I, I do know when I was at the meeting upstairs for the town hall. I think just like raising the handrails, where it came up to, handrails in the, in the counters came up to something like, what, seven thousand dollars?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand dollars?
Wow.
It was like, whoo, just to comply with that. So, that, that's.
Well.
A big chunk of change.
Yeah.
Now, what counters, just ones in the front, yours?
Can you get CPA money? I know they have to redo the counter in the clerk's office. And because that's. I want to say historic, it's, I mean, it's an old counter with old paneling and, and it's going to cost more. To have them preserve that and bring it into ADA compliance. Does that fall under?
CPC does, you can, you can use, in fact, they've given us certain funds. Part of which are, were already being held for the elevator to help offset some of that cost to improve accessibility. So, and also, they, some of the money's being used for bathrooms, right?
Correct.
So, that is a, a use for CPC funds and I guess. It's unfortunate Paul's not able to be here. Our town administrator's participating in a procurement class this week. Not here tonight, but. Perhaps something, yeah, something along that line, more ADA compliance in the phase two.
Looking at the whole thing with, with the contractor and the engineer or the architect that designed it. He's got his drawings and he, he made recommendations. He went on the cheapest side. He didn't overinflate anything. And that was like a shock to me because it's like, wow, but in Lydia's office, there's quite a bit of work to do on moving that cabinet. The cabinets there, they're all solid oak. And originally, back in the eighties, that counter used to go.
Is that, it's not the whole thing that's being taken, just a portion?
Only that part that goes from the wall out.
All sections are being moved.
Yeah, do you have to move that, that, the big counter back?
Has to go over and it's just, it's so slight. It's like two or three inches has to get moved over. And it's possible, they're checking into it, the front counter has to be moved back. But I thought when the ADA person was originally in there, once the door can swing fully open, that's by moving the back counter. Over, once that door can be fully open, then you get your five-foot radius and then that front counter doesn't have to be moved.
That's exactly what I tried to tell the architect, but.
Well, I was telling him too.
He was arguing with me, so.
Double check with the architect or the ADA, who, compliance people, because somebody, and I, I think it was the ADA person that first came in. And did the survey, and they also originally were, they were going to put the shelf where the swing door is. And I says, well, is there any way you can put it on the other side? And once they looked at that, I guess they thought that was actually a little cheaper and easier to do it. Over on the other side, so.
I don't know what you have in the cabinets that are against the wall there.
Stuff.
One of my suggestions is to see if we can move that out of there into another location, if that would work for you, but I don't know what you have.
Yeah, it's storage. I, yeah, yeah, no, I need.
You need that whole section.
For the discussion here is, does anyone have, other than the phase two town hall? And potentially some IT to ask Paul to make sure if we have IT, an IT buy over this next years, six years, we have that reflected. Anything else that, from the Board of Perspect, Board of Selectmen perspective that we think needs to be captured in that?
I think that was, that was.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm not trying to create stuff, but. We'll have plenty. All right, that's, that's fine. Well, we can work with Paul and include that. Next item. Defense local technical assistance proposals. I guess the question is, do we have any? And this really relates to the other one here on Community Innovation Challenge Grant Support. There's two potential sources of grants. Both of them, from our perspective, are, are focused on regionalization and shared services and that type of thing. Is there? Is there anything that we're interested in pursuing at this time?
I mean, is it, if it's like number seven, is this what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, there's two. There's, remember the PVPC administers the defense, excuse me, the. District Local Technical Assistance Grants to towns. And then there's also the, the challenge grant. But both of them are kind of geared to the same, same thing. The DLTA this year is being focused on planning and regional, regionalization. And the Community Innovation Challenge Grant is really focused on facilitating regionalization. Or shared services kinds of, so they're both, they're two different. Package, packages of money, but they're both focused on the.
Right, I would like to know what the short term and the long term, how much is going to cost us, okay? Short term, it may not cost us anything. In the long term, if we have to take it over, how much is it really going to cost us then? So, there's, there's issues that when you start going with these grants, they're great in the beginning, but then they turn into. They may turn into something a lot more than you bargained for here, so I'm not sure.
Well, these are, these are essentially study grants to, to look at, for example, well, you, you started. There's money in the budget this year for the Board of Health to look at à la carte health services from. The Franklin Cock. You know, is, is there something else that Board of Health would be interested in? Exploring for a shared service? Are we interested in shared services, Danny's here on inspections? Are we interested in shared services on, I mean, fill in the blank. We have certain ones in DPW now with equipment with Wheatley. Are there other things that? We think warrant some study, perhaps more, far more complex than just a sharing of equipment? I'm not trying to create anything here, but if, here, here's our opportunity to.
No, I just, what comes to mind when you say regionalization is, is like the Wheatley Fire, Wheatley Ambulance, okay? And they merge together with Sal Deer Field and Sonnenland, okay? To me, I'd certainly want to know what, what the costs are going to be. What's the cost?
We could have found that out, but we were told by a, one person on the ambulance that. They didn't think it was worth it, didn't want to get involved at all, so. That's, I mean, I was right there when I heard it, so. I mean, I, I personally would have thought it would probably been a decent thing to get involved with. I know right now.
I think that's right. I mean, I think it's worth looking into, but I think that the cost factor, the, the shared cost factor has to be really looked at. I mean, like us, I mean, just for a small example, I mean, we're involved with sharing of roadside mower.
Right.
You know, we know what the cost factor is yearly.
Well, they, they've got it for this year. They've, they've pretty much estimated what it's going to cost each town. Sal Deer Field being the highest. It goes by population, basically. You know, but would, would it be worth us looking into? Would they even want to bother with us now? I mean, that's the other thing, you know?
I, I mean, don't forget, we, we opted to put in ten thousand dollars into the ambulance budget last year. To see if we could promote and, and get more people on the ambulance committee. So, that's.
I, I just heard it was.
Picked up two people today, so.
Within the past month, the, the training is going to get so, much more advanced that. The part-time people are just, aren't going to be able to handle it anymore.
Right.
I, I don't need to, I don't need to get drawn into this lengthy discussion, but. The state is, is either, our has already or is moving to eliminate essentially that intermediate level. So, you'd have a basic intermediate and paramedic level. And they're doing away with that intermediate level and requiring some extensive additional training. So, you either had a basic or you had a paramedic. And, you know, we've talked to Greg, if, perhaps he'll be here later tonight. That would bring us down essentially to the basic level because folks just don't have the time. To spend all those hours that are required for the paramedic level, which would certainly. Then, if, if, if it, if it happens or has happened, would, would certainly make us take another look at. Perhaps another arrangement with, either, either with them or with Northampton.
I was going to say, Northampton, I mean, would probably be. The better, the better because they're, I mean, they're right down the road, you know?
Well, that's, so. Something that, if they wanted to look at that kind of a situation, then that'd be one thing to look at. But I'm not sure what this grant entails here.
Well, it's, right now, you, you'd be competing for dollars to help with a study. Either to study whether to do something and/or if, if there's been a study to help with the transition. Into the new organizational arrangement. That's what, that's what it's about.
Right, but you're not obligated to.
No.
-once the study is complete.
No, no, so, to see, would it work? Well, anyway, I'm throwing it out there. You know, another one is Veteran Services. We passed on that when Northampton took the lead. And, gosh, I don't know, we were paying, what, a thousand or something? And it was going to cost us around $10,000-
Yeah.
-to join there. But like with ambulance services, there's a whole bunch of new requirements for veteran services officers coming along the line here. Might prompt us to take another look there. Accounting, we've, well, we've tried that with HCOG. HCOG is having a very difficult time getting the talent necessary to get something off the ground. I'll tell you what, this is, we need some kind of answer by the 22nd. If you all want to just think about it a little more and we could come back to it.
Maybe if Paul got us something to read, I mean, there's nothing in our package to read on that. Give us a better understanding on what it's about. And, you know, like number seven here, I mean, I read through the whole thing. And some of it might be okay, some of it might not be okay.
But those are illustrative kinds of things, examples of things that are going on. You don't have to choose those particular initiatives.
Right, but this is what they're looking at.
The kinds of things they're looking at.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, we'll table it and come back to it in our next session. Next item, again, kind of in a bind here. This has to do with Center School. And we have a letter from Mr. John Wilk's Chair of the Site Assessment Reuse Advisory Group. Recall again that we got a grant. We engaged Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to administer the grant. It's to look at our Center School. You know, we've looked at selling it, looked at renting it. We've looked at using it and kind of stumbled along the way on every one of those paths. So we were trying one more time to get some professional help in terms of what would be the best potential uses? How best might we market that? What is the condition of the facility to support those various best uses? And we got a grant to do this particular work. And this committee has interviewed and assessed a number of consultant firms, and they've come up with a recommendation to enter into negotiations for contract with the firm of H/AI Architecture of Northampton. And they also, John also points out here that the committee is requesting contract assistance and development of next steps be completed with input from Jim Maisick of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Well, clearly he'll be engaged.
Do we need a vote on this one here, or is it this, is the Pioneer Valley Planning Council taking, taking the lead on this?
No, we, this will be our contract.
Okay, well, just-
But, you know, has, without anyone here to explain, I don't know whether, has the due diligence been? I know they interviewed and this came out as the best potential. Has someone done due diligence on the contractor, previous jobs, that type of thing? Well, I'm kind of operating in an information vacuum here.
I'd like we move, take it under advisement until our next meeting and have Paul get some of the committee members in here.
Paul, you know, has been on this committee representing the board.
That's the most that we can do, because I don't know anything about contractor or consultant.
Neither do I.
When is our next meeting?
Well, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about that and earlier the better, I think, knock off some of these things. All right, so is some motion of table?
Someone?
All right, is there a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're going to come back to an early meeting to take up some, some of the stuff to clean up. Because they need to get moving on that. Again, we just talked about the CIC application. That deadline for submission is the 22nd of November.
On number seven?
Yeah, Community Challenge Grant.
Because I noticed in here that, you know, I mean, they're looking at regionalizing buildings inspectors and all kinds of different things where you can apply and stuff.
Well, these are examples of things you might consider, that's all. So if you think of any, we'll come back to our next session too. Skating rink. Now, we have a request from the Recreation Committee, a representative of the Recreation Committee, Mr. Niles, asking essentially for the board's reaction to a potential initiative on the Recreation Committee's part to establish an outdoor skating rink on the basketball court that's just been built out in front of the fire department. Asking for essentially a point of contact, some sense of what the expectations of the town would be, what, what type of approvals would we have in mind for them?
My concern would be just the lighting at night, okay?
To build it on a blacktop? That's what they want to do?
Well, yeah. Well, they usually put like a plastic down and then put the, put the skating rink over it. They've done it in the past years. It worked fairly good, but the minute the temperature warms up, the blacktop warms up and then the ice melts away quicker.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's the tough part about doing it on the blacktop. But, I mean, that's the, that's what they're asking for, Recreation Department. You know, Mike is-
Do you have any reaction?
Well, I mean, the timeframe for it is going to be less because of the heat and the asphalt. I mean, it's not going to last. If you put it on grass surfaces, it's going to last because the ground's frozen.
Right. But like I said-
They used to have one down behind Center School at one time, I thought, was another option.
I think they're trying to get it in the center of town, you know, more participation and stuff like that. So, I mean, if they think it's going to work, then I don't, I don't have a problem with it, other than lighting.
And how they're going to secure the border. They're not going to drive anything into that blacktop.
No, it has to be on the outskirts of it. No, they're not, they can't drive anything. And I think that's their intention, to go outside that, that blacktop.
I'm sorry, what did you mean, drive?
Well, they can't, they can't-
Sometimes they pin it, they put the boards up like a surround board, you know? And then they put the water up to it.
Didn't the other, the other thing have curbing in there? And then they had, I thought was either PVC going out where they could drain it afterwards?
Greg Weeks used to do that and he had it going around the curb, basically.
Yeah, but this doesn't have the curbs, so.
Right. Yeah, so you have to have boards of some sort.
They're not going to drive no pins to that blacktop.
No.
That's for sure.
And what about the-
So we can let them know our concerns. You know, one, like I say, one concern I have is the lighting, cost and stuff like that, and how late.
Well, you've got down here indirect lighting. Down here, one of these took lighting over the playground, basically the court provide support for the hours from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Right, don't forget it gets dark at 4:30 in the winter.
Well, that's, that's what he's talking about, potentially going 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Five to 5:30 on the front.
Well, all right, so, is there a sense we support in concept?
I'm, I would support them, you know, with the, with the questions that I have-
Yeah, support in concept and then-
With a couple of concerns.
Couple of concerns about how-
How it's going to be framed or ordered and, and the lighting. Okay, those are the two concerns. Well, one concern I have, you have the other one with the pins. I don't know if you have anything going on.
Is the only thing, is the-
And where are you going to draw the water from?
The water, who's going to pay for the water?
Fire Department's offered up, apparently they coordinated with Mr. Chief Beldon.
Yeah, it says we could have access to the water.
There is going to be a lot of water poured out there. It's going to be a lot more than you think, you know?
Especially if it's on a blacktop.
But it's, you know, it's for community kids and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just saying, you know, who's, who's going to be responsible for the water?
Well, we know there's going to be expenses, there's no question about that. Maybe one of them should, maybe the chairman or somebody should come in and talk with us on this. Tell them that we support it, but we have a couple of questions.
Yeah, because you don't want them to draw out of a hydrant every other day or something where you have to go on antifreeze and, you know?
Oh, they probably got to do it every day.
Yeah.
No, but they're going to come out of the building, is what I'm saying. So the building is metered. Now, who's, you know, I don't want Chief Beldon coming in and say, hey, I need more money now because my water, my budget.
Well, Chief Beldon, because the facilities took that over, so it'll be coming out of me.
Or you. Yeah, that's right, too, so. But I mean, you know?
Yeah.
All right, well, we support, okay, for the record, we supported the concept and we'll bring in-
I'd like to make a motion that we supported as a concept and with, with a couple of concerns that we have. I'd like to have a representative from the committee come in, or the committee come in and discuss.
Okay, three seconds.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
This United Nations Day proclamation is OBE. I can finesse it. It came in late and missed our last meeting and what we could do is change it to a United Day, United Nations Month proclamation. And where it says "Day" in the first line, take out the date in the first paragraph, just leave October. And then down, third tick, where as citizens of Hatfield should participate in all activities related to UN month, proclaim October 2013 as United Nations Month. Could finesse it that way.
Yeah.
End of month is two days. We'll never get it into them.
Well, we can just say it's OBE and it's the only other thing I could-
The intention is there that we support them, okay? It's unfortunate that we got, we did not get this in on time, but I'd like to say publicly that would, you know, I'd like to move that we do support them in this proclamation.
Second.
As I edit it here?
As amended.
As amended, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This next one, Smith Academy.
This is that grant that keeps popping up. I thought this thing was taken care of. What's going on with this? We signed off on the grant?
We, yeah, I sat in on the initial meeting with the representatives on the phone from Massachusetts School Building Authority, was superintendent of schools and others, Chair of the School Committee, and others were present. And at that time, we raised the question, if you recall, they asked the Board of Selectmen to sign this certification of a whole range of things. And among them, one of the items to be certified was that we would within, I think it was 90 days of 29 January, come back to be able to say that we would fund the project. You know, as you recall, we're supposed to commit upfront for the total amount of the project and then we get reimbursed as, as we submit bills to the state in $50,000 minimum increments. Well, in that discussion, we said, well, that, that takes us up to virtually the first of May. We have a town meeting already scheduled, the 13th of May. It doesn't make any sense to have another town meeting just to have that item. And the representative from School Building Authority agreed and said, didn't think that would be a problem. Well, apparently, the school or someone has gone back to ask for written confirmation and the School Building Authority is reluctant to give written confirmation that that would be okay. And as you say, as you see here, they're going to address this written, this request for an extension past one May, when they meet to formally approve the project. You know, we're, I mean, we're already well along here. Every expectation is that it's going to be approved. We've already submitted the schedule showing that we're going to use the town meeting on the 13th of May. This from the project manager says, well, if they say no, then Town of Hatfield would need to consider having a, a special town meeting, one subject to commit to-
But the Board of Directors, we're waiting for them to make the answer, make the decision.
Right, so I guess I'd take this as, it's, it's up in the air, but I think the expectation is it's going to get blessed.
I'd like to move that we, we have Paul move forward on this and to check this out to make sure that we're not behind in any way and that we've executed all our documents.
We have, no, we have.
I want to double check that, make sure, because-
This is, has to do solely with whether or not they'll accept us having committed to it on the 13th of May versus 90 days from the 29th of January.
But I guess I'd want Paul to stay on top of this, even contacting the Board of Directors and finding out where they stand here. This is important.
John Roberts is talking to, to the folks at the Mass School Building Authority.
As long as somebody stays in contact with them, then there shouldn't be a problem.
Schedule, November, December. Let's talk about schedule. We're scheduled to meet on the 5th. And on the 19th. Now, that's only one week from now.
No, we're not scheduled on the 5th.
Pardon?
I've got Homeland Security on 5th. Remember the 1st and the 3rd, I've got Homeland Security.
About 4th.
We're always the 2nd and the 4th.
Huh?
That's what we, we've always-
Yeah, the 2nd. But I mean, how about if we go November 4th, if we want to just clean some of this stuff up?
Yeah, we want to clean up.
Fourth would be all right.
Could you do it on the Monday?
I'd rather the 4th than the-
I've got emergency management at 9:00 to 10:00. I mean, we only need, what, a couple hour meeting?
Yeah.
We had it at 10:00 to 12:00 or something like that.
How about 6:00 to 8:00?
6:00 to 8:00? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I'm up at 4:30. What do you think?
I got to be up in Saw Deerfield at 7:00.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, yeah, I'm okay with that.
No, I got to be in Saw Deerfield at 7:00 for blood-
Eight, how about eight?
Yeah, but, I mean, at 9:00, we've got, I've got to be for emergency management.
10:00, okay, I'll go.
Okay, well-
10.
10:00 on the 4th. Which means we need an agenda.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
What do, what do we need in one- What do we need in one such a hurry for?
Well.
Why can't it wait until, go into the next week?
The, well, the center school thing is, is one of the things we want to get moving on. That contract, proceed with that contract.
Oh, we can have Key post it for tomorrow, post it tomorrow, it's not a problem. For Monday at ten o'clock.
And I'll give you a couple other little things, all right, all right, so, good, that's the fourth. And then the other would be the third, that'd be the nineteenth. Is that okay? It's Halloween, not Halloween, Thanksgiving, not until the following week.
You're getting into my second, fourth meeting, second and fourth.
Okay, all right.
That's, you know. The first and third are the Homeland Security Council meetings I have. The first and third, so the second and fourth is usually the schedule that we're trying to stay on.
Well, but that takes us into Thanksgiving week.
Okay, let's see what we got here then. That would be the twenty sixth, when's Thanksgiving?
The twenty eighth.
Be the twenty eighth. That'd be two days before, unless you're planning on going.
I'm, yeah, I'm not here.
Can we still, can we do it on the, can we stay on schedule and do it on the twenty sixth?
You two can do it.
I mean, if, I don't.
Let's try to stay on schedule if we can.
That's fine, leave it, leave it there, I won't be here.
What, on the twenty sixth?
Twenty sixth, yeah.
How about the twenty fifth, the Monday?
He's probably gone the whole week.
I leave. Yeah, I'm gone that week.
My schedule's flexible.
You sure?
Any day in the.
Wednesday the twentieth I could do.
Okay.
I try to keep my Wednesdays open for me, but.
All I got to do is say, no, I'm not working.
Leave the twentieth, that's great. Okay, December?
Twenty at nine, nine thirty, nine o'clock?
Right.
Okay, now are you into December?
December. If we leave it, okay, well, it's first and third, you mean this?
The second would be the tenth and the twenty fourth, well, the twenty fourth doesn't work because that's the day before Christmas. Do the nineteenth.
That's a Thursday, is that okay with you?
Thursday on the nineteenth, I've got a construction meeting in the morning, eight to nine, that'd be fall within. So, you want to do December nineteenth?
Yeah, nine o'clock both. Okay.
Nine. And how does the.
How about January? Or do you want to wait on that?
Okay, the tenth, December tenth is okay though, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, all right.
We'll do January another time, we got a couple other things we need to.
Well, we could do the second.
Because, because January, we're going to have to.
Meeting down the.
We're going to have operating budget schedules.
There's a lot going on in January.
There's a lot, so, we'll come back to that one. Porch. Fire department porch. Okay, the infamous fire department porch.
New door.
Fourteen time administration report.
There's nothing in here.
I'm not sure what's going on with that, I mean, the last meeting, you guys wanted to withdraw it, there was no vote on it.
Well, I just think it was like that. I really don't know what we want out there, I mean, ten thousand dollars for a little roof and a couple of posts.
Well, it was eight thousand dollars, I think Phil said, that's one of the quotes that he got on it. And that was for a twelve by twelve roof and. And that was with the concrete walls chopped down to within, what, four feet off the ground roughly?
Roughly.
And capped. Okay, because you can't take that, the blocks out totally because that holds the stairs. So, there's some work that has to be done in the concrete there.
Well, why would you? I don't, to me, it doesn't. I think it's, I think we could come up with something a little bit better maybe.
Don't forget, it's got to be tied into the.
You're looking at, you're looking at.
That flashing.
You know, I mean. You know what I'd really like to have seen, and I'll say this for probably the fifth, the sixth time, is three bay doors going out the front so the fire trucks actually aim towards the street, not in the parking lot. That's what I really wanted to see, but obviously, that ain't going to happen.
That was an option that I asked about, and that didn't happen.
I'll tell you, as far as.
We have to put some kind of a roof over that.
Well, yeah, I mean, you could just do, put one little roof on, cut your walls, your brick and just a roof there and for about four thousand dollars. I mean, we're spending an awful lot of money in between these two buildings is what I'm seeing, you know, and it's, people are starting to say, what are you doing?
That's not my fault.
I know, but I'm saying, why don't we just put a, put a roof over it? It definitely needs a new door, it needs a new door, cut those walls down to four feet. Put your posts up, put a roof up, done. It'll look good.
It won't look good, it won't be, it's going to look like a little.
Let's back up.
For the cost of money, it'll look good, and I think people will say, oh boy. Well, I'm just saying.
What's the requirement?
What's the requirement?
There's the building inspector right there.
What's the requirement?
I mean, you've got to have a roof over the steps, otherwise you're going to be shoveling all the time. Okay, you need, the door coming out is a three foot, a three foot door, and that was going to be replaced. And that was it.
Yeah, the door definitely needs to be replaced.
So, the requirement is to replace that door and requirement for some cover.
Yeah, I mean.
Coming out the door.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to get real elaborate, we can put a portrait across the whole back of it. But.
For what?
We're going to have a.
The thing is, you're limited to space because of the sidewalk, it has to come out past the sidewalk there with the post. That's what, that's what brings it out, to what, to ten feet, Phil? I think that's what it was, nine foot six or something like that.
Something like that, I don't know, I don't remember the measurements now.
Okay, well, who's got the money for it?
Well, is there any money, my question was, is there any money left from the demolition?
No, I don't think so.
Because if there's money left from the demolition, that's where it should come from.
I mean, we can check that article, but I really don't, I don't remember now, because we had to have the asbestos removed out of that article as well. So, we abated the asbestos and then we demolished the building, but there might be, there might be, I don't know.
Can you check with Mike and see if there's.
And see what.
Check and see.
I don't know if there is.
Because that's where it should come, that would be the completion of the job from the demolition. This is a remnant leftover from the demolition, that's what this is.
Okay, we can check the article, but like I say, off the top of my head, I don't know.
Well, somewhere along the line, you need three bids.
If it's all under ten thousand, we can go with three quotes.
Three quotes, right.
Again.
What you do is you put out three quotes, and if you only get one quote, then there's nothing you can do about it. But you at least put out three and document it.
That's correct.
Now, Stanley might know three contractors that are available for work.
All right, so you're going to check on funding and.
But there has to be a scope of work drawn up by somebody, or this contractor can bid something where this contractor's going to bid something different. I mean, there has to be some kind of a, some kind of a scope of work documented to hand out to somebody. I mean, you just can't say we want to build a porch out there.
Just a two post porch with a ten by ten porch with a hip roof on it, and that's what you need. It'd have a short ridge, whatever's going to extend out so it looks good on the front there, that's it. We try to make it as simple as possible because you've got to cut into the brick and put flashing and stuff, you've got to flash that whole roof. That's expensive when you start cutting into the mortar joints and putting in the flashing and that kind of stuff.
Okay, well, why don't you, why don't you take a look at what Pete drafts out, see if he captures? All right. Water main project? Do you have anything on that?
Gillaher's planning on mobilizing shortly, I know he's been, they're up there logging now, they started up there today, so. You know, within the next week or two, you're going to see equipment here.
Who's logging?
Wagner.
For who, us?
For us, for, well, for the project, for our property, yes.
On our property?
Correct, yeah.
Now, what are we getting, we are getting money off those logs?
We will.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
Has there been resolved about the borings and the tests in that area?
Finally. Finally, yes.
All right, so that's no longer an issue?
It's going to be an issue now.
Okay, that's fine.
As of today, it's been resolved, but that could change.
And we're talking about is the old alignment?
The alignment of the project, yeah, all the permits are in place, so, finally.
Phil, one more question for you, how, did we get in touch with the locksmith to coordinate the locks?
Did you see today's email, did you see the latest and the greatest email?
I didn't see the latest email.
I believe that this building they're using Foster locks. So, I guess that, they said that if they're not using the Foster locks out back, that they can't coordinate it. So, we have to find out what they're using out back for core.
Okay.
Once we know that, we can come up with a tree.
Okay, and Paul's not here this week, so you, oh boy, they needed to know like yesterday.
Yeah, well, we have to find out what kind of locks they're using, what spec out there.
We can find that out by calling, calling the contractor.
You can handle that, right?
Yeah. And then the other, the part that we're supposed to do is get in touch with, which, Fanoff or one of the locksmiths and come up with a, how we want the locks situated, come up with a key system for the building.
They're looking for the tree, the key tree, to come up with a plan.
That's exactly right, like a grand master and then submasters and then all the way down here. That's what, that's what we need to take place, that's what they're waiting on.
So, are we going to use old locks, keys and?
This should be all, it should be a key system, it's going to be a key system where there'll be one grand master or some submaster.
He can go to any lock in the, in the building and open a door with just one key.
Police and the fire ought to be able to do that same thing or have available.
Well, that one key would be in the lockbox out in front of town hall, yeah, exactly.
Which is in place, so.
But that system has to be put into place, and they're waiting on us to do that.
Right, well, I think now they're waiting to see.
I mean, but he's, he's, don't forget, he's the facilities manager, let, let him take care of, Paul shouldn't even be involved in stuff like that, you know?
That's what we're saying, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, we're worried about Paul coming back, but let, Phil, that's basically his, his job, so he can get it done. Let him work with the contractors. We don't need to wait for Paul to come back from vacation.
I know that, I know that.
Paul did leave some notes about various projects, unless, I'm sorry, did you have anything else? I'm sure you all read them, there's nothing. Appears to be on schedule for the building there, town hall's on schedule, there's a code issue with the new outside steps.
There's a code, I was here at that meeting and there's a code issue on the outside steps. Stanley, the building inspector, warned them ahead of time that there was a problem, they nego, they failed to listen to them and they poured the steps anyway. Now, they want to doctor it up by pouring another cap over the top of it. I don't, and I, my thing was, is it never works when you go over the top of something because the water gets underneath and it cracks it apart.
It's going to pop it right up.
Yeah.
And, and I said, you know, it's fine after two years, you guys are out of here, and then five years down the road, we're the ones that are replacing it. So, you know, my suggestion would be to have them chop it up and redo it.
So, yeah, well, are they?
I mean, that's, that's what I would recommend.
Who's, whose issue was, is it a design problem to begin with, or was it, did they?
Is it whose problem?
Was it a bad design? Or did they just do it wrong?
They didn't follow the design.
Okay.
They didn't follow the building plans the way it showed on the plan. That's what Stanley was questioning it, okay, and they.
So, it was the contractor, yeah.
Contractor, yeah.
He's responsible?
Well, the contractor summed it up.
He's got to chop it up. Have them chop it up and start.
Yeah, we, we don't pay for that one.
It's only a nine inch step. Well, no matter what you do.
So, so you're working that with the contractor, all right, gotcha. There's this issue about, apparently some suggestion about using the current police office for the Planning Board and Conservation Commission. Just, you know, let's table that discussion for now. Recall though, that in the variance request that we submitted to the state regarding ADA compliance, we said those two, that office was going to be vacated. So, they didn't require us to do anything there with the doors or anything else because we said the police office is moving out of there. So, if we end up putting other offices back in there, we need to bring it up to code and there's some additional costs. Anyway, we'll come back to how that gets allocated eventually. Audit's on track for November, finally. Energy plan, town administrator's got a cut at it, he's waiting on Guardian. We do owe the state a report to DOER by the December third. Came up about the dike extending the dike project from where it stops now, just north of intersection with Bridge Road along the dike and going up another hundred sixty feet or so.
My concern on that design is that it doesn't match the design that was done in the eighties.
It never will either.
And the closer you get to that eighties design, if there's a failure on that, it's going to take the eighties design out if you're not careful.
But we, I mean, we even, that, those days are done, what we did in the eighties, we should have done back then, in the whole thing. But obviously, we didn't have the money, I mean, we got the money for it. They won't even allow that anymore.
That's, I mean, it's.
Really?
No.
They will not allow it.
But that's what they had to redo over in Hadley, and they did it the way we did this dike here.
I don't, maybe because Hadley's taking the direct hit around the corner, I don't know, but this is, this is their, I mean, I look at it too.
I guess the concern that I have is the closer you get to what we did, I just don't want to make sure, I want to make sure that that doesn't undo anything that we've done.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's a solid, solid wall in there, past the high tension wires.
Well, I think it's going to just come butt to it.
They're not going to touch it.
Actually, actually, that part right there, they're not really going to, they weren't even going to do. When I went down there, I says, this is where our concern was, and the contractor at the time that was there looked at me, he says, I agree with you, something should be done there.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, to do the extension?
The engineering didn't have, they said that's fine right there, I says, all the water's coming in and all you, you get in a circle. Their big concern right there is people are walking down that embankment. Their big concern right there is people are walking down that embankment. I mean, if we can fence it off, fence it off, and then, you know, maybe they could put something in there if, if we go ahead with this extension and build it up decent instead of what it is right now. I mean, I think the guy, remember, he said he was gonna put some, try to put some of that, I don't, I don't, wool is what I call it, I mean, there's nothing really to it.
Like a fabric, like a filter fabric in between.
Yeah, and then they put plantings in, they plant little, and that, those plantings...
Well, when they were down there, when MEMA was there, they were looking at the erosion from people walking down there. And I'm sure there's vehicles, you know, probably motorcycle or something four-wheeler going down that path.
I mean, that's where most people walk, their dogs, let the dogs go down in there, and they, they wear that path down. I don't know if we can make a path going down there, you know?
Well, not really, I mean...
But that's something that you can maybe talk about and handle.
But for here, is there a motion to, well, number one?
It's not really gonna cause...
We found, we found that we do have the additional funds to cover our cost share to extend this project. So, is there a motion to authorize the town administrator to identify to MEMA that we have, in fact, the funds and the board of selectmen approve?
I'll move that we appropriate the additional funding, I believe it's what, our 10% or something like that of the cost, or whatever the percentage our share is.
Our cost share.
Yeah, our cost.
Okay, is there a second?
That'll be covered.
Oh, second.
That way Paul can go back to them and get it, get it completed.
All in favor? Energy report three, got it? Any other old business? Unanticipated new business?
No.
Come on up. I just need to get you near Mike. Sure. stiff?
Okay, I guess I'll, I'll start this off, I did Stanley's review, and gave him a favorable review on all aspects here. He's done his job well, as expected, he's performed his job the way he should, he's gone to all the training.
Hold it, you're all done with Phil, right? We're all done with Phil, he can leave?
Sure. Yeah, we're all set with Phil. And, let's see. Okay, as far as on track, Stanley, as, as long as he stays on track, he continues to keep his guys doing their inspections, there's no problems with any of the inspections. And also the schooling, everybody's up to date on schooling. So, in this case here, I gave him a favorable review, if there's any questions from you guys, we'll go from there.
An issue on performance at all, and just a couple of things, one, your views on inspection services, potentially outsourcing some of that activity, or entering into some regional agreement? Have any, any views about that?
Yeah, you guys are the boss, not me.
No, no. Well, you're, you're...
I'm not gonna be here that much longer, so...
Well, that's what you got Bob for backup.
Right now, but I don't know how long he's gonna be around either. Might be looking for two guys.
Well, that's...
But regional, you know, you wait for your inspections. That's one thing, and then when you go regional, you gotta put so much money in the car for every guy, so you got one inspection or some many inspections.
Sometimes you're better off to just stay, stay in house with what we have in town, but if you can get, if you can get qualified people.
They just backed off.
I mean, you're doing a good job, Stan, and you, you keep up to date with everything, and you just, you know, when you retire someday, that, we gotta make sure that we find somebody equal to you, that's all.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, you're not gonna be here forever.
I have to get four weeks' notice to retire anyway.
Well, that isn't very long, you know, so...
That's a long time.
Not for us to find someone to replace you.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a thankless job, nobody wants to be on call 24/7, what do you get paid? Guys go out, I'm getting $28 an hour and inspect that, guys working $54 an hour out there. You know, what, there's no justice in this, plus, we gotta keep schooling. Right now, with all the code books, we got 4,500 pages of code. It keeps changing every year. I'm just lucky I got Bob on, and he's a certified builder commissioner. But if you have to hire a guy, then he's got 12 months to take the test and prove, and pass it, and if he don't, and just to go to take the test, now, whoever is, is appointed by the town, they have to send a paperwork to Boston, and then Boston says, "You show us the paperwork where you worked for a guy for five years for training, they wanna see the paperwork before they even let you take a test." It's no more hanky panky like it used to be, you know, just say, "Well, do this, do that," and there's no more. And when the guy's gotta take the test, you know, it's a thousand dollars, 1,500, you gotta buy the books, the town don't buy them, the guy's gotta take them out of his pocket.
What do you mean, the town doesn't buy them, I, I thought we buy all the updated manuals?
Not the books, we're studying for the test.
Oh, oh, okay.
And then he has to pay for the test himself, the guy has to pay for the test, if he doesn't make it the first time, it's another 300 the second time.
Right, I mean, he's got an obligation also, and then we pick up everything after that.
And if it's part-time, how much money's he making, is it worth the guy? You know, that's the problem with the towns. I mean, I started out here at $750 a year.
You've got the benefits, and you've got, you know, you've got the vehicle, you've got the, you know, so there's perks that go along with it, so...
Part-time guys don't have that. Your assistants don't have it. My assistant doesn't have it.
No, but when you retire, then whoever steps in will have the same thing as you have, yeah.
That's the problem today, is, I mean, like I say, it's thankless, so...
Well, we appreciate what you've done, that's not an issue, we're just looking ahead. Someday, I know, you're gonna do something else, and...
We just don't want you to up and take off. Go to Mexico or somewhere. Jamaica.
Whatever.
All right, you got any questions as far as review for us, or anything?
No, I read it, I had no problem with it.
Okay.
Thank you, Stan.
Don't lose his good news, you know, sometimes.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thanks, Stan. Okay, have a good night.
Good night.
Tom? Anywhere there's a mic.
Bit up there.
Appears, a little bit up there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good.
Okay, again, thanks for coming in, Tom. I did Tom's review, also, I gave him a favorable review. Performance was average or above average on a number of these, work habits are, are same, average. And the training and supervisory abilities and stuff are within our qualifications. And you're on target with as far as keeping the guys trained, and everybody's up to date with all their training and so on. Let's see, I think there was one part in here. Okay, to look, look at a five-year review, I don't know if I put that in, but I thought I did, maybe I didn't. Oh, create a, a, here it is, here, yeah. Okay, one of the things I asked is to create an overall plan for the department on where they plan to be as a department in three, five, and 10 years. So, that's part of your goal for this year, what the objections are, and come up with some kind of a plan, let us know for the short term, midterm, and, and long term. And other than that, you're doing a fine job. And, there's gonna be any questions?
One of the other things we asked for was kind of regular updates, not just to us, but to the community.
You're right, we should set up some kind of schedule that I would be in, you know, at a certain time, that way I can...
See, even once a quarter, it'd be fine with.
Once I'm, once I'm out here, I don't think of it, and, you know, if, if I know I gotta be here next week at whatever, you know? Be a lot more incentive to, I mean, it...
Well, then you're gonna have to take notes, 'cause you're gonna forget what you did three weeks ago.
People for that, no. I know what you mean, well, I'm pretty good about that sort of thing, as long as I know I gotta be somewhere at a particular time, I can, that's not a problem.
No, I think all of us have the same view of your performance as chief, you've been great to the town, a great help, and again, like Mr. Sodasky, you're not gonna be here forever. So, Ed's request, I think, is on the mark, and that's kind of an indirect way of getting at that, you know? What, what do you have for recommendations, kind of, as the way ahead, having been here a number of years, seeing how things operate? Lessons learned, things we need to do differently or better, that would be very helpful.
We had a good experience this year when I got sick, and I had to have Mike run the department, he did a good job.
Well, I wouldn't call that a good experience.
Well, not for me, it wasn't.
The day I came to visit you, you wouldn't even let me in.
It was a drill, yeah, I know.
Almost the end.
Didn't eat your son, though.
Don't need that anymore, that's for sure.
Sorry, do you have anything?
No, just this comment on the last page, we're working on that. Okay? The facility's up, you know, up to date, so, I guess, well, I guess my question is, I mean, how's it looking for you?
It's looking good, we go over there every day and keep moving them. Don't, don't be working on a fireside.
They said this week they'll be putting up Sheetrock, I haven't gone over there to check it out, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's basically what boxes they're building. Once they get the Sheetrock up there, there's not too much more else. We did pretty well, I mean, as far as furniture, we're gonna have to put in a capital item, but then we got some money from that concert. So, we might be able to use some of that for that.
Great.
But that's the association.
Like for desks or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, you know, that's the association, or maybe for lacquers for the guys.
You might even be, you might wanna check, like, with the school and stuff, because a lot of times, they, they take, you know, nice, I mean, chairs.
Yeah.
Nice chairs that you could put, like, in a...
The regular most part where everybody's gonna be working is gonna be built-in counters, so we won't need desks in there, just chairs. The office slash interrogation room, yeah, the desk needs to be in there, we're gonna have to have a video system in there, so somehow, I'm gonna have to come up with money for that, because that'll be where we do our interviews and so on and so forth. So, that room, we gotta have some furniture for that, and locker room, and the evidence room. The evidence room, we'll probably go and get those stainless steel kinda shelves that you put in, you've seen them in bakeries and so on and so forth. And we can do it that way, and I say, they're expensive, but they're not that bad. And then lockers for locker room, like I say.
You might wanna do...
That, that safe we took out of, up here, is that in place?
Everything works, we got Mr. Fanoff down here, within five minutes, he had that thing operating.
Yeah, okay, good, so it's all set?
We got evidence in it now, nobody's gonna steal that thing.
No, I don't think so, not without a crane, anyway.
Don't talk too loud.
Yeah, I know.
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah, this is true.
Nah, I don't know, I don't know about that one, no, that's...
That's a big safe, I was watching a movie, man.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, a little bit of update on your cruiser, I know it was sitting there, and I guess there was no correspondence on what was going on. But as far as, we got a note from the auditor that he's on target, so it looks like it'll be ready hopefully by maybe mid or the end of the month.
We took it on our own initiative to call MHQ and explain.
At least they know what's going on, thank you.
If you told us before, we just put it out in the back and not worry about it, so now they know.
'Cause what they, they didn't know what hap, why Haffield didn't pick up their cruiser, they had no idea.
It's all there, it's all painted, all we gotta do is switch radios and so on, and they couldn't figure out why they're picking it up.
So, we had to wait for the audit to happen, so...
No, no, I understood that part, yeah.
And it looks like it'll be done the end of this month, the end of November, um, the end of November, I'm sorry.
November, right?
November, right.
Good, and after that, it's just nothing really.
I've been after Greg to see if we can get a verbal, and the bank will accept that, but that's between Greg and Phil, checking with the leasing company, if we can get the verbal okay, that, you know, they talked with the guy, and they said, "Yeah, this is favorable," or whatever.
Yeah, 'cause we had the money appropriated, it's a matter of paper.
It's all about the audit, that's what it is, audit completion. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. It's up.
Any other business?
No, we'll do the adjournments.
We'll do the adjournments, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.